First then. Okay, we're recording. Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Thursday, February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. Time now is four P M. I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
One Julie. United States of America, and to the Republic which stands in the foundation of our God, individual, liberty, and justice.
All right, any correspondence?
There is none.
Is all the correspondence going into the Board of Finance, I imagine, through email? All right, so let's get started. We'll, we'll try to move somewhat quickly. We're gonna start with the board that obviously you're all here. So first, we're gonna look at the Board of Education's total budget proposal. We're able to take a cut out of the entire amount, not by line. So with that, I make a motion that we remove five million dollars from the budget for a total of forty, excuse me, fifty-four million, three hundred.
Five.
I said, I'm sorry, did I say five million?
Yeah, wow, I am here.
All of a sudden, it's not bad, huh?
I was like, budget's over, let's go. I think that's quick and easy, we're done.
Mine is.
You got everybody's attention.
Five million.
I was thinking, wow.
So it is, okay, I got the right number here. So eight, seven, seven, four, eight, nine. Okay, so we're taking three million, right? All right, so uh, uh, obviously, we, we have to remove something, so we're gonna take five hundred thousand from the line. Uh, the total amount will be fifty-eight million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. They, that's like.
Yeah.
Right, right?
Fifty-eight, eight, seven, seven, four, eight.
Fifty-eight, eight, seven, seven, four, eight. Okay, do I have a second? Sorry. Um, you know, before we vote on this, obviously, we know how difficult this year is. Um, we're trying to balance, we, we've all started from the position where we know the needs and we, we know what is on the board right now, and it's very difficult. We do have to come to a budget that's gonna pass, otherwise, we're all gonna be in trouble. Count two. Um, I think that we gotta be very thoughtful going forward if there's any additional cuts to this, but I think, right, this represents something that's fair, and I think we can all figure out a way. There's other things on the table we hope are coming. Maybe some healthcare savings, some things like that. So with that, I think this is a really reasonable, uh, reasonable budget.
Brian. I, I don't think any of us took it lightly, you know, especially when we're talking about real positions and, you know, possibly affecting people's livelihoods. You know, no one gains any glee or satisfaction from this cut. It was, you know, really painstaking, to be honest, was, you know, we've been agonizing over it, but, you know, we just can't present a budget, you know, a total town budget of seven, eight percent to the voters, because we just know that's not gonna pass, you know, so hopefully, like Dan said, we find some help along the way. Maybe the governor lets the forty million stand, and there's no veto. I didn't follow the news today. I don't know what he did today. You know, maybe some other money comes in, but you guys do a fantastic job, and I know you guys are gonna make it work and do the best for the kids of Bethel, for sure.
Yeah.
And we appreciate it very much, we really do.
You always make it work. Thank you.
Well, it, it's interesting, because we do it right. And I, I tell people all the time, you know, how can we be at the top of our dirt and even in the region be at the top, yet we're one of the lowest per people costs? So we do it right, and that's not loss of us, and it's, uh, it's just an awful year. We've said it for nine months. We've been talking about it, because we knew we was kinda, we knew how bad it would be.
I think the perfect storm was an understatement.
Yeah.
And I've been doing budgets for, you know, how many terms on the one term on the board bed, two on the board finances. It's my second election through board. I've never seen one like this, but you just looked at it and just said, there's, really, it's just the perfect storm all around, you know. Again, I think that's an understatement. It's like a tsunami. Like, I, I couldn't believe it when I first looked at it and said, well, you know, maybe we'll get lucky, and then we realize there's not much luck coming our way. The insurance companies just.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, but that's, many Americans are dealing with the same thing. You know, their insurance companies are canceling, their policies are going up, you know, fifteen, twenty percent, and no one really has an answer for it, so, yeah.
Okay, with that, uh, I will try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Don't move on to.
Four sixty.
Four sixty account. I'll make sure.
Tyler's here today.
I, I, I noticed.
Tyler, we missed you last night.
And it's, and it's his birthday.
Oh, really?
Hey, happy birthday!
It was, it was my birthday on the tenth. So are you still Aquarius or not?
Now, a five million dollar cut.
One million.
Oh, well, you know, I'm Aquarius.
That's one million after this cut, right?
No, I, I wrote down, we're gonna do six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four cut. Yeah, so we're, we're looking at the four sixty account, and we're looking at the total. Um, I move that we, uh, take one hundred thousand dollars from the proposed amount for a total of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. That, that with you, Brad, on the amount? I always will check those with Brad now. I know better.
May I ask?
Um, yeah, let's recognize, uh, Dr. Carver.
I, I, I understand why, why you have to take the hundred thousand out. I just wanna, I guess, confirm kind of the working understanding we had before, because you know that we're gonna run into emergencies throughout the year. So is it the same understanding that when we, it, when and if we exceed the budget, hopefully, we don't, but it certainly hasn't been our past history that we can come to you and say, hey, we've got pipes leaking, different, you know the drill.
You really wanna hit all the sore spots. If you have an emergency.
Yes, that was for you, Brian. That was for you.
Early.
But, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to come to you. I mean.
Yes, we're, we're reasonable. We wanna maintain the schools, and we don't want, uh, you know, we're reasonable. If, if you have a leaking pipe and the money's not there to fix it, come to us, but come to us early and let us know what's going on, then, yeah, of course, none of us.
The, the, Dr. Carver, the last two years, it's, I think it's been very clear that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, although I can't speak for them, chair's in the room, he should be nodding his head.
Yes.
Yes, he is. Um, I think we've established a very, very good relationship, and we understand that we have to have your back. Um, we've done so in the way of capital expenditure expenditures where we can. I think we'll continue to do what we can to make that four sixty account, you know, do what it needs to do. Um, just a very real part of looking at the beginning of the year where we are, and then, you know, see what we can come up as the year goes along.
And, and can I ask one other follow-up question? Um, you, you know that we, we're going to have to do the, that study, the HVAC study.
That hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yes. Brad, is that in our capital plan? I can't, I, I know we talked about it the other night.
Yeah. It's in there for seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure we don't lose sight of that, too, because I think it's really important. I think Jen and Tyler would agree.
It's also a mandate.
Yes, correct. An unfunded mandate.
Correct. Um, any additional discussion on the, from the board? Okay, with that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sentences? Motion carries. Um, school, school folks, if you wanna stay, you can stay. Watch, watch, watch what happens. We appreciate you, and we thank you. You want to stay around for the whole?
You want to stay for the whole street, he wants to get to you now.
Thank you.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right.
Thanks, guys. Have a nice time.
Thank you.
Library. We take a five million dollar cut of the library? Do we have enough?
And I stopped you.
They always.
Thank you.
I'm looking at that, I'm like, I'm just looking at the number, and I'm like, wait, that isn't right. I'm sorry, it's been a long day, man.
I thought you and Nick switched positions.
I'm like losing it. Uh, let's start with sixty dash four thirty-five, library. How did we do this? Well, we just opened it, we just went and made the motion per line, and we didn't.
Because it's library, you do it the same way the board of it at bottom line.
Right, it's a bottom line.
Correct.
All righty then. Let me make sure I get the right thing here. Propose, okay. Um, I make a motion that we remove six thousand dollars from the library budget for a total of one million, fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollar increase.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Now, you're gonna be, I, I know it's, you're running it tight, and you are a community center. It's just one of those years. Well. Okay.
I'm gonna sponsor a flag, put some back over.
Yeah, he's about to. Any comments, questions? Okay, with that, I'll, uh, we have motion on the table. What do you second it, right? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion of, or, uh, the opposed motion again, um, motion carries, sorry. That's, that's, cross that one off. Let's go back to the beginning, then, just break down the list. First one is, um, uh, ten one hundred for selectmen. Uh, I move that we approve the request of three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is ten, one oh five, economic development. I move that we approve the request for ninety-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions? Uh, the next one up is, uh, the treasurer, uh, ten, one, ten. We should just cut this one right out.
Paul, you owe us three thousand.
You owe us three thousand, Paul. Sorry.
It's, it's Paul, it's, you gotta ask him how much revenue he's bringing in.
Paul, how much revenue did you bring into the town?
Uh, with that, uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the fifty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is comptroller, ten dash one twenty. I make the motion that we, or I move we approve four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Any discussion? Motion, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Get ahead of myself. Motion carries. Ten dash one thirty, town clerk. Uh, I move that we remove five thousand, five hundred dollars from line fifty-two fifty, election expense.
Second.
Do I have a discussion? Where the, uh, we haven't, we basically haven't used anywhere close to, we haven't needed it.
Do, do you wanna give the, the, although after that?
Uh, yes, for, for a total, I should do that, so I'm gonna.
I think for the departments, and, yeah, I don't know if you need a separate motion or just one that says both.
That's what I was asking.
Typically, we've done separate ones. I think if you do one that says a reduction of this line for.
Okay, let's be. No, it's good. So, um, so we talked about the election expense. It's still an incre, it's a, uh, a proposal of twenty-three thousand. Uh, they haven't used the other amount, and we figure if we get in a bind with, you know, the ballots or whatever it is, because they just had, they got a whole bunch of ballots sent to them, they're gonna have to toss here recently, that Secretary State said that were junked. I guess they weren't, hadn't had things printed on properly, so we can come back, but they've not hit anywhere close to this, in that budget yet.
I think she was concerned about the absentee ballot, but if it becomes an issue. We could.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and again, we're trying to really be as tight as we can and not carry, you know, in different places. So, um, I'll, I'll restate the motion, um, so we have the total this time. I move that we remove five thousand, five hundred dollars from line fifty-two fifty for a total of two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that, motion carries. Next up is ten dash one forty, assessor. I move that we remove eight thousand, five hundred dollars from line fifty-two oh one office expense for a total of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Second.
With this, I, I will make a comment. If there's any way we can get this into our contracted services, we will. It's for a program that is called, like, uh, was it Near Me or?
Near Matt.
Near Matt.
New, but.
It's kind of, um, imagine like, uh, G I S on steroids, where they have flyovers every six months. We can actually get greater detail on properties, so when things come up, we can look to see if, you know, a deck has been built or whatever. It's also very helpful for all the other folks with zoning. It's a good program. Um, so I'm gonna try to find a way if we can fit it in somewhere, but it's, it's really a want right now, so I think in the beginning, we have to take it off the top. Um, so with that, we have a motion on the floor. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is ten, one fifty, tax collector. Um, I move that we approve two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
You remove?
We move.
I moved that we.
You said remove.
I moved, that's what we moved.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I thought you did.
I move, I'll approve the amount of, thanks. I, I apologize, guys, I'm not on my endgame. I should have you do this for a while. Uh, two hundred and forty-one thou, thousand, four eighty-two dollars.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, ten one sixty, professional services. I move that we approve three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Wait, wait. Second, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Pro great court, ten dash one seventy. I move that we approve eight thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Next up, information technology, ten dash one ninety. I make a motion that we remove thirty thousand dollars from line fifty-one oh one salaries and add five thousand dollars to fifty-three, one, three contracted services for a total of four hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and three dollars.
Second, true.
Yep, so for discussion, the reason that we're removing so much from salaries is we're gonna take the full-time secondary position and make it part-time. Um, obviously, you know, this is an awful time. We hope to get that position back someday, because it will be needed. Right now, we're in, we're kind of in a good position, because our, our former, by the way, I'm gonna cover this in the board finance, so, so, so tune in, but our former I T guy left, we used him as a little bit of a consultant, so we can keep the person in there. Um, but we need the part-time help at least, so we're gonna cut half that head off. So, uh, with that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten two ten, town insurance. I move that we approve one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
Brad, is, is that, oh, everything's locked in on that, or is there any?
Yeah, so we've already gotten a renewal on that one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Which we're good, but there's no hope for it going down.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, with that, I will try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is, uh, ten dash two fifty, planning and zoning. See here. Okay. Is that, was that you? Okay. Uh, I move that, uh, we reduce line fifty-one oh one by thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars um, for a total approval of three hundred thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. A second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, um, again, there was any request to make a full-time zoning enforcement person. Just can't do it. Can't add, can't add that. We have a part-timer. We're getting by, um, just can't add headcount.
Well, that's just a question with the new planner coming onboard, would that be a lesser cost also?
No, no, I, I imagine that whatever planner we get is gonna be the same salary cost. Given the environment and what it takes to actually get a trained planner, it, it could be, um, I mean, looking, I've looked across the state and kind of benchmark salaries. We're definitely gonna be at, at least where we are now. All right, gone are the days where you can, like, take down and come back up again with that level of position, you know. Um, any other discussion on your end?
Oh, it's the reality of the situation. That was half the time to be adding personnel.
Yep. Uh, and, and listen, I honestly, if we, if we lose that person, too, then we might have to go full-time, but I, I don't wanna go there. We're gonna do best for him. With what we got, uh, with that, I'll try my minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then motion carries. Uh, ten two fifty, oh, sorry, you did my, this might back on, thank you. Uh, ten, three thirty, red star voters. Um, I move that we remove seven hundred dollars from the line fifty-two fifty election expense for a total of one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
That's the last line. Tim comes in sixteen percent under budget.
Yeah, yeah, machines. Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Ten three forty, boards and commissions. Uh, I move that we remove five thousand dollars from line fifty-five oh nine to our revision for a total of sixty-three thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Uh, in this, we, we've kind of watched where we are, and what we think the timeframe is finishing up. Um, we originally had, you know, what, fifteen grand a year for that? We think we're gonna be able to get paid, but in the end, so that's why we're moving it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten dash three, any parks and recreation? I move that we approve two million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. Any discussion? Without trying mine, it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten dash three ninety, employee benefits. I move that we remove ten thousand dollars from line five one one three for a total of seven million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars. Uh, that is going to, uh, basically be part of a reduction of an ask of a full-time position later in the budget, so that's.
Uh, you are, it's the.
Well, that's.
I T.
Oh, that's I T, that's that one. I, yep, gotcha. Yep, that's I T. Uh, without all.
Where I am, question, yeah. Uh, and, you know, we have talked about the firemen, even for some, uh, incentives, uh, this, this world would be possibly put in.
Oh, no, we're gonna, we're probably gonna have to create a new account. Um, we'll get to their budget, and we'll discuss it.
Right.
We do, um, one of the accounts, Rich, I think we have a placeholder for a future line in there. There's no money in it right now, but.
Right, yeah, I see, it's, it's coming up in our government agency, yeah. Okay, um, with that, I'll try my own favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, um, ten dash four or five, intergovernmental agency salaries. I move that we remove, uh, sixteen hundred and thirty-three dollars from line fifty-three forty-one part bus and twenty-seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars from line five three four two sweetheart bus for a total of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Second.
So, uh, basically, we get an ask every year for the buses, pretty significant increase, and they're asking for more service, obviously. We are still getting an increase, but it's a two percent versus a five. And we can work with them throughout the year to do whatever we can to support, but after you're looking at where, what they're trying to do, I don't know that it was gonna be an increase in service for us versus the cost. Any further discussion? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten dash four ten, utilities charges. I, that we remove fourteen thousand dollars from line five three two one utilities for a total of three million, six hundred and one thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Second, for this one. Brad, you wanna cover that one?
Yeah, so, uh, one of the items that we've budgeted for, right, four or five years now, is, um, a town vehicle, we had vehicle tracking. Costs us fourteen thousand dollars a year. When we are looking at everyone, the line items, uh, Dan made the point is, it doesn't feel like we're using to the extent of paying fourteen thousand dollars in the current environment. So we contacted the vendor, we shut it off going forward. Um, so obviously, when we're, we don't need the budget line anymore for it without it, so that's the fourteen thousand.
Is the P V swap you could.
Yes, that's different. There's always been separate as part of there, yeah.
All right.
All right, fine.
Okay, further discussion? Without trying mine, it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Excuse me. Um, next up, ten dash four twenty, miscellaneous charges and transfers. I move that we take twenty-five thousand dollars out of line fifty-three, fifty-three wage adjustments for a total of one million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Second.
You know, you basically, um, it looked like there was just a little room in this where we could trim it out. I mean, I'm hoping we're not gonna need it, but uh, it seemed like, it seemed like the place to go. Any questions? All right, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then motion carries. Ten dash four thirty, senior center. I move that we approve two hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is building and inspection, line twenty dash one eighty. I move that we remove five hundred dollars from line fifty-two oh one office expense for a total of three hundred and sixty-six, excuse me, three hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Line twenty dash two ninety, emergency management. I move that we approve forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that was a boat in my simulator. Um, motion carries. Next up is twenty dash three hundred, fire marshal. I think we approve one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Bethel Fire Department, twenty dash three ten. I move that we okay, uh, that we remove forty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars from line fifty-three oh one for a total of two hundred and fifteen, five hundred and two dollars.
Second.
It's gonna be two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Is that a good?
Excuse me. Rich, this is, um, this is kind of where you were referring.
Yes.
What we did, uh, the fire, uh, border fire commission recommended that four hundred and sixty, excuse me, four hundred thousand, forty thousand, six hundred and three dollars.
Okay, I'll give the selection a raise.
Yeah, right. Man, for the volunteer incentive.
Yeah.
We're going, we're gonna actually move that, I think, maybe out of the capital, or, um, out of the, you know, capital recovery, you, uh, the general fund or fund balance to do, and we maybe do something more substantial. Okay, it does need to be done, but given the budget, it just makes it quite.
Many years.
Yes, um. Oh, that's killer, I apologize. Obviously, I have a motion on the table for two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Next up, twenty dash three twenty, Stone Hill Fire Department. I move that we remove ten thousand dollars from line fifty-two oh two, equipment supplies, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from fifty-three oh one, dues and education for a total of two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, so these two, uh, the equipment supplies, uh, they were asking for a lot of turnout gear. Over fifteen thousand dollars.
Addition.
Addition, look, very, uh.
Yeah, we're, we're very, we're very cognizant that they need the turnout gear, but given the year, let's, let's play it out through the year. I know that, um, Bethel just discovered somebody who actually repairs turnout gear. So let's see, maybe we can save some throughout the year, and they can come back for capital now occurring if they need to, that line. The other one was exactly what we described before, the thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty. That was part of what they were putting in for an incentive fund. So I think what we'll do is we'll look at a, a, a separate number down the line out of fund balance. Any further discussion on that line? For that, then, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Upstate.
Upstate, okay. One extension, motion carries. Line twenty dash three sixty, police. I move that we remove fifty thousand dollars from line fifty-one oh one salaries and we remove one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars from line fifty-four oh three, capital equipment for a total of six million, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, excuse, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Second, uh, the, the salary line, uh, is the additional police officers that they were asking for, so we've removed that. Um, any other? Well, that's, yeah, that's removed. We're not gonna put anything in. And then the other one is fourth vehicles, uh, we're reducing by two vehicles. Uh, by two. Now, with that said, um, I do know that the board of selectmen is gonna have on the agenda next week, uh, the possibly moving forward with the K nine car, which is something that's really needed. And we have something that's available now, that's what I'm talking about, and it's, uh, there'll be a fourth board, just like what we have with the others. So we'll talk about that later, and, uh, still a few with it.
See, so the way they got, you got to the one thirty-two eight.
Oh, yeah.
Is each car itself is fifty-two thousand, five hundred. The changeover is seventy-nine hundred, plus the K nine has an additional changeover fee to outfit it. Not really a changeover, it's an outfitting of twelve thousand dollars.
Did, did we ever figure out, though? Because they figure trade-ins on four vehicles. Only two vehicles are getting traded in that are gonna get retro for equipment, so what happens if they're never to?
They'll get traded in until we get another part, right?
So, this will be, so I spoke to the chief today about the canine vehicle, he said he found one, um. The third, if the board's approved buying a new canine vehicle, they will keep the other one as a third. Cause what happens with the canine, cause right now the police have two canines. Uh, the third he will keep as a road job car. And a spare canine, cause right now if one of the canine car goes down, they have to give one of the other police cruisers, I guess they're not cruisers, right, cause they're SUVs, to the canine department. And then that car gets torn up a little bit, cause it has the dog in it. Um, so his thought was to keep the one that's end of life as a third slash spare slash road job one, um. In case one of the other ones goes down, they don't have to muddy up one of the other cruisers by having to be a canine for a week or two. So that one he wouldn't trade in.
So I probably were trading it in too.
So the two in his budget, he has four in his budget, that wouldn't count trade-ins. Um, but the two that are remaining in the budget, if this motion goes through, um, wouldn't have trade-ins. So the amount that he budgets for is net the trade-in.
Cause he takes it out of the, uh, the buildup. The lights and all the stuff on it, what he says.
Yeah, I'm following something.
Okay.
This is about text three thirteen.
Did I say fifty-three thirteen by mistake?
Well, that's where it is.
It'll be fifty-four or three is the capital.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, let me see. Okay.
Now, if, if we end up doing something with a canine vehicle, do the two vehicles still stay in the budget?
Yeah, so in theory, he needs three to four years. So, if he can get the canine sooner, cause that's the, that's one that he needs to do first. Anyway, he'd be able to act on it sooner than the one that he found. And then the two in the budget would be his second and third car for the year. And then if it's a year that he needs four, he'd have to go back. Um, cause in the current budget, twenty-five, he's got two in the budget, and I think from C N R was a third. So this would be the fourth in twenty-five, but he probably won't get it by the time it gets outfitted and stuff for months anyway.
For some of the trade-in thing. He trades in a car every time he gets first. So if there's two cars this year, we two figures, right? Except with this here, if we do the canine and keep.
I do think going forward, so we can get a list of the years, all these vehicles, what years they are, which ones are actually being used in patrol, which ones are set aside for uh, extra duty. It would just be very helpful when we're talking about you know, vehicles, and again, you know, I don't want people to be safe, I want them to have the right vehicles. You know, I don't know if it takes four years, I mean, that's a lot of vehicles. You trade in four every year.
Yeah.
That's a lot of vehicles.
Well, they didn't ask, I don't believe they ever forgotten four a year.
That's right, just wanna see how many cars we got, yeah, I think that's important, cause we did buy some, we did buy some with COVID money, I mean, we've always done our best to you know, make sure that our officers are well equipped and safe in their vehicles, so obviously we don't want but it'd be interesting to see how many vehicles we have. That are patrol vehicles, how many vehicles are strictly set aside for road jobs unless there's an emergency. Uh, I'm just interested to see those, those numbers.
Sure. Any further discussion on the, okay. All in favor, say aye, aye. Next up, social services, thirty dash two hundred. I move that we approve one hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. On paper, aye, 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 motion carries. Next up, thirty dash three fifty health department. I move that we approve five hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars. On paper, say aye, aye, motion carries. Four forty dash two twenty fleet maintenance, I move that we approve four hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and one six dollars. On paper, say aye, aye, motion carries. Forty dash two thirty public works, I move that we approve four hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. All in favor, say aye, aye, motion carries. Forty dash two forty highway, I move that we remove two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from line fifty-four oh four low construction. For a total of two million six hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
I think it's important though that everyone realizes we couldn't reduce the road budget, we're bringing it at last year's funding of a million fifty thousand, which, you know, is still a healthy amount of payment, so we're not taking away, we're just saying we need to hold. For now, hopefully next year we can go back to adding money to it, but we're not rating the account.
I think we're not, we're not keeping up with the situation. We're also with the understanding though, that our highway project has done a really great job on the roads. We're gonna have a change in leadership coming, um, we have a road list that looks pretty good, but we don't do a lot of rest nights and stuff like that, so we're hoping that this is a good year.
I mean, I mean, if it's inflated, is that four percent, right, you're talking about forty thousand?
Right, cause last we gave, we kept fifty. Um, okay, with that, uh, I'll try my, all in favor, say aye, aye, motion carries. Next up is forty dash two forty-five transfer station. I move that we approve two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. All in favor, say aye, aye. Next up, forty dash two sixty building maintenance, I move that we approve nine hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. All in favor, say aye, aye, motion carries, next up, forty dash two seventy tree ward. I move that we approve one hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars. Any discussion? Motion carries, uh, excuse me, all in favor, say aye, aye, motion carries, okay. Um. Debt service fifty dash four forty. I move that we approve a total of five million well, excuse me, five million two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay, um, anything you wanna add, Brad, about debt or what it's gonna fall off?
That's where I'm interested, Brad, when will we start seeing a reduction?
So we've seen a huge reduction, um, yep. I don't have your budget book in front of you, but it's two hundred and sixty-nine.
A lot of that was based on your refinancing, right?
Well, so, there's like a hundred thousand dollars for the savings this year from refinancing, um, and we're still going with the debt service plan that initially was gonna call for the using a hundred and eighty-three thousand. But I bumped it up to two hundred and eighty-three thousand this year because, um, the, the school audit being done uh, of the renovation projects, so we think the debt service fund's gonna grow by like a million dollars, once that's all audited. Yeah, so that the debt service fund was gonna drop to, at the end of my seven, and to six hundred thousand. Now even taking in additional hundred thousand last year and hundred thousand this year. At the end of the seven years, the debt service fund still is like one point four million. Um, but right now, without any adjustment, our debt's really at five point three million dollars. Um, in twenty twenty-three, when the schools first came on, we've been, did not adjust it. So not what was in the budget, what we actually paid was six point eight. So the debt's been dropping, um, and the non-adjusted goes from five one three to five point one two to five, it drops like a hundred thousand dollars a year right now, that's interest. That's principal and interest, yeah.
But what's the total real number on that, like what do we owe?
Oh, it's like fifty million dollars between everything, but it's over the next, the schools, we still have like seventeen years.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to see, I'm just curious, is what our total debt in town is, is fifty?
I don't know, it's fifty, we just refinanced, suppose it's thirty-eight, Dan?
No, it's, uh, one to twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Yes. Uh, but we, that did include the two most recent school ones, cause they were too new to refinance.
But financially, we're in good shape, I mean, that's not I'm not saying it's a number to laugh at, but in terms of other towns and where their municipal debt goes, I mean, we're relatively, we look good, right, to most of the.
Yeah, so our, yeah, we have, yeah, they love us. Yeah, so our quote-unquote debt diet and getting off the credit card for the last some years has been what's driving this been down, we don't have any short-term debt, we don't have any of that right now. Um, everything's locked up, um, locked up at good rates, um. But like, even if you go out to twenty forty-two with stuff that we've done in the past that we're gonna be paying for, for a while, we still owe eight hundred thousand dollars, so like, yeah. Uh, but that's the last of one of the, the school bonds goes out to twenty forty-two. So we're still gonna be paying for that school renovation, that two, eight hundred grand, that in twenty forty-two, but we did it, the nice thing is we, we could've, uh, bonded that school debt for thirty years. Uh. Uh, the I can't talk controller Kozlowski, and when Bob Manfred was chair of the board of finance, they decided to do twenty years. They said, let's pay for it shorter, because there's gotta be other things that we eventually need to bond for. Um, so debt-wise, we've been doing everything really well and managing all that, and by the board of finance upping the C N R account last year to a million dollars, that helps. Um, and we've had healthy fund balance and had good years.
What would the rating agencies say, like? They don't like to see your, uh, your, your borrowed income.
There's a ratio, there's an amount that you're allowed to go up to, I don't know what it is offhand, because we haven't been anywhere close, the, the number's huge, it's scary. Okay, it's like when you look at your personal credit card, they, they bump up your credit card limit, you go, if I spend that much.
But our debt is approximately fifty-five percent of what we bring in. Um, fifteen, our budget's ninety.
Yeah, well, so it'd be like five percent.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that our, our total, that is what I'm looking at, not what it costs to pay that debt off, just what is our total debt?
Uh, and our total outstanding principal for, for the general fund only, cause we have sewer debt too, is principal fifty million six twenty-five. Once we make all this year's payments, so it is fifty million dollars.
With the sewer debt, a lot of that pays for itself with the assessment, because that, that is basically based on telling people you don't have to pay to hook up all at once, we break it up over, how many years do you do?
I think it's twenty years.
Twenty years, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, those are the source incentives.
Thanks, Brad, you're a wise and wealth of knowledge. I need that sincerely, thank you. Your boss laughed at you.
No, no, I shouldn't.
I know that, Brad.
I was laughing at you, but it's, it's amazing though. I, I've had lots of conversations about how lucky we already have Brad, I don't know what I'd be doing.
Does a great job.
So let's get through this budget before you decide.
Yeah, true, truly. Okay, I believe we have a motion on table, all in favor, say aye, aye, motion carries. So I guess now we have to do a total of town, right?
Brad's gotta give us that.
Yeah, let me just, I just, give me two seconds just to double check that I have everything.
Real, Brad.
Total town number is on the sheet that you have to hand out there.
Yes.
So I'm just making double checking that. Um, so I didn't have.
So, so we voted, we, we.
Thirty-three million seven hundred and twelve thousand.
No, should we thirty-nine, four, three, forty-four?
Cause you're adding that, you have to go line by line.
So the total town operating, but you voted on debt already, you voted on four sixty. You need to vote on the total of the thirty-nine million.
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine, three, forty-four.
Yeah, okay, and one of my numbers in my spreadsheet, I'm signing up the check.
Oh, okay.
Your number's right, I believe, I just got it.
Well, we, we, we took out, we did the, uh, the four sixty already, that was a hundred grand. So right now, our total is thirty-nine million three hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Well, I, I, I'll, I'll leave that for a little show, I, I move that we approve the total town budget as thirty-nine million three hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. So, okay, so let's make sure we got that right when Brad's ready to call it, cause I don't wanna, you know. Create a problem.
So you guys went really quick and I was trying to update myself, as I want. So just wanna make sure I have everything.
I, I think your numbers are wrong, cause you don't have the five hundred thousand in for the board.
Yeah, we gotta take.
Well, yeah, so that's gonna be.
Yeah, cause it's, we only did seven hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four, cause we've really got a total of one point two million thirty-seven.
I'm just trying to tie up the town side.
Oh, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't go ahead and save the number one. Good night, everyone, great job.
That's right.
That, everybody, can you wait, stay longer? Rather get it right.
Well, you're here till six o'clock, it doesn't matter, yes.
Alright.
So should I go and say the total first and see if we agree?
So I had, yeah, so the thirty-nine number that you, did you vote on that yet?
No, no, we have not, it's, we, we have thirty-nine billion three hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-five.
Correct.
Okay, when, you voted that first. Yeah, right, so we have motion on table to approve the total town budget. All in favor, say aye, 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 motion passes. Next up would be the total budget, correct? So we should acknowledge the number I have for the total budget overall is ninety-eight million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Yes.
Now, do we have to vote on that total?
I think typically you do, it doesn't, it doesn't go anywhere, cause it's, their budgets are separated.
Okay.
But I think they recognize that that is the total amount.
So, yeah.
Can I just, what is the number that is approved for the board of that?
Fifty-eight million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Fifty-eight million.
Yep. Eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Yes.
That's reported then.
Or that.
That service we freed on five million two four twenty-five, right?
Yep, yep.
I'm going anywhere. I, I, I just wanna make sure my numbers are right.
Do you want, you want for reference what the town operating is, say out the other two?
No, the town operates thirty-nine, three forty.
Well, but that includes the debt and the board that makes.
Cause that was five hundred, we took out it.
That's fine. Well, this is a total budget number here. And that's where we were before we took that out, so we'd have to add five hundred to that.
So the handout doesn't have the board of that.
Yes, but you have to add five hundred to that, and you have.
But I would say, yeah, it's like the same. Brad, what's the, what's the total number?
So, the total budget would be ninety-eight million.
Yeah, but see, that's not the.
And so is, what is the percent increase on the town side?
So, there's three aspects of the town side, you want the total town that includes the operating debt. So the total town, board is after tonight um, is, looks like one point five nine, I just wanna make sure that's correct, cause that seems now something's not totally in that, right?
I, I had a.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be like four point something, yeah.
Yeah, I had a four point.
Um.
I don't know where you're going with the two of them. We made about eight and a half million dollars. Cause there's a lot of debt service, there's electric. Additional ma- the maintenance.
We're sixty-four.
Again, there's all kinds of. We're good landlords.
I can associate that.
They're gonna be penny. They really are. We're so lucky, we're so lucky. I shouldn't say that, cause we got Jennifer on there, we'd wanna give it a gap.
Um, so.
She's still watching, I guess.
Still watching, the town side is four point three four percent.
Four point three four, and how much is this school?
School of seven point five four.
Seven, still at a seven.
Combined, it's at six point two three.
What?
Six point two three.
I'll have to go through, rather than part, yeah. Go through that next week, I guess, right? The revenue would offset that. That's not like a direct tax increase there. The revenue would offset that.
I can tell you preliminarily with what this budget is and what we know right now in this moment, or what we think we know right now in this moment. The proposed mill rate would be thirty point nine one.
What's your current rate?
Twenty seven. It's the current mill rate is twenty nine point one seven, so it's a one point seven four mill increase. Which is a five point nine five percent.
So one point seven four mill increase means for every thousand dollars your house is assessed.
Yes.
You're paying an additional dollar and seventy four.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, dollars. And that's. That's assessed, so that's seventy percent of their praise. I know you know that, Brian, I'm just saying to anybody that's watching.
I do know that.
Yeah.
So on your, what what's the average, let's not say the average assessed house is two hundred thousand.
It's not anymore, so. It was three sixty last year. So if you took. So. A three assessed that, because it's a dollar seventy four per house. So if it's three sixty. Um, three sixty times one point seven four, it's six hundred and twenty six bucks.
Six hundred and twenty six, and that's on, uh. You know, a very modest house that's not on, you know. So, I mean, that's real money.
So how'd you do, if the average, what do you, what do you think our average is now?
So, I I was talking to Nick earlier, saying we talked about houses that say. Market value is five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Would be assessed at three fifty.
Three fifty.
So if you took three fifty. Times one point seven four, it's six hundred and nine dollars. So, um, obviously, your house is appraised at a million dollars, you double it. If it's appraised at two fifty, it's three hundred. Um, one of the things that the, uh, because it may be something that comes from the board of selectmen, and we haven't gotten that far yet. Is the state changed the way motor vehicles are valued. Uh, the House voted last night to allow towns through the board of selectmen, um. To up each one of those values by five percent a year. So right now, what the state did was. Less than a year or a year old, uh, it's eighty five percent of M S R P, and then it goes down five percent a year. Um. What the House voted on last night, we don't know if it's gonna go anywhere, is to allow towns, if they choose to. To bump up from eighty five to ninety, and then every year below it is up five percent too, because it drops five percent a year.
Does the town get to keep all that revenue, or is the state?
It's all based on how we value, so it'd be, it'd be the town money. So.
I mean, I guess we're not talking about it tonight, but it kind of balances out.
It's helpful.
It's help, and it's not trying to punish people, but there are people who don't own real, you know, property in town and just have cars registered in town. You know, we lost eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars of revenue.
It it allows us to face in.
So what would be, if if we picked up that five percent, like, would it would increase it by forty K our revenue?
So the rough numbers, because Izzy's going through it, she spent all day going through it, when we did a quick look at it today. It could be three or four hundred thousand dollars, so it could cut the reduction in cars in half. What's hard about what the state did initially, like going by M S R P. We looked at a commercial account today that had, uh. M S R P of a commercial vehicle of a hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. So, and it's a twenty sixteen, so. The old value of it would take the M S R, like the value of it on the market, they said. Last year before all this, it's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It maintained a lot of its value. Um, because I think the useful life of it's probably twenty, thirty years. I think it was a cement company, so I assume it's a cement mixer or whatever. Um, the new calculation the state did said because it's a twenty sixteen, now the value of it's. Fifty percent of it or fifty five percent of it. So their tax bill on that one vehicle is gonna drop drastically. Even this five percent, it's still a drastic drop.
Does the state, I thought commercial, I thought commercial vehicles are taxed as real property. I thought that was the whole point, that they were gonna tax.
If it was some vehicles as real property.
Like trucks and things like that.
That that schedule wouldn't work, right? Because that's a commercial vehicle.
It was on the assessor's list as being the lower value now, so she knows more about it, so I would assume. That it was done that way, but we can.
I mean, I just had, is that how you have to assess like real property too?
Uh, no, so this only affected motor vehicle.
Whether it's commercial or.
Yeah, there was like trailers went away and stuff like that.
But but the commercial trucks are now under personal property of the business.
How much, how much revenue did we lose on the trailers going away and everything?
I don't know what that is.
I don't think she broke that for us.
Um. So, but there was.
You gotta look at.
I think, I think we'll have that discussion next week.
And how, like, what we need to see if the sign votes on it, I'm assuming?
Yeah, and then they would have to go to the governor, and there's a chance that, I would think because. It would affect municipalities. I would hope if they were gonna do it, they would do it quicker, but there may not be that much for it.
Did they, but did they vote, did the governor beat till the forty million, or he's still deciding?
He, I have heard nothing else. Some of the, what we're hearing through the grapevine, and who knows if it's true, is that, um. He may just never act on it, and if he never acts on it. It eventually goes into effect.
I I think he's using, I think he's using it to, I think he's using it, what what, whatever the legislature put in the bill for no passage. I saw that in each bill, in the bottom bill, there's a time for no passage. So whatever.
If they say you need to let these.
Actually, he has amount of time.
I I I assume wanted passes both. There's a, there's a.
Because they wanted it done by April, so the towns knew what was going on with their budget. It's not fair to the towns, the way they do it.
Totally true, yeah. I don't know, but I I've heard he's kind of, we might be out of the scope of this being, by the way. I heard he's, he's really hoping to use it to affect the guardrails and stuff, but so.
I guess you probably still in the scope because it does affect them.
Effects the budget, yeah, but.
Yeah. So we, we are studying the effects of if that goes through. Um, I got an email today from the Government Financial Officers Association. They sent. Whatever request up to the state, they want it to go from eighty five to ninety five and be a ten percent adjustment. Because some towns lost fifty, like we lost twenty eight million dollars for the value of the motor vehicle. I think one of the examples is like West Hartford lost almost sixty million dollars assessed.
So. Right, just, and again, this is for my own curiosity. If you wanted to reduce that number by one full percent. You would have to cut nine hundred and eighty thousand out of our budget, or does it not work out that way?
So to get the mill rate increased to five percent.
Not well, the six point two three, if you're looking at.
Oh, that's.
To five and four, yeah.
So if you took current budget times one point one five. To the current board of selectmen.
One point one four. One point one four million just to get to a five percent spending increase overall.
Correct.
In addition to what we already got.
Correct.
That that doesn't sound right, an addition.
But that's to get to the expense line.
Oh, expense line.
To get the mill rate to that, I think we are looking at. Uh, we have ten seconds.
That makes sense.
So to get the mill rate to a five percent increase, given what we know now, the motor vehicle thing can change the calculation. The reduction as a whole needed to be one million nine eighty three. And I, what you guys did, the board did seven twenty, seven thirty seven, nine seven four. With another five hundred thousand. The board did one million two thirty seven tonight. So to get to a five percent mill rate increase, again, with a caveat of what we know now.
Yeah.
An additional seven forty five and some change.
I. I I know we talked about mill rate increases, but I do think we need to be transparent in what the spending increase is.
Yeah.
I mean, people need to know that this is. Wherever it ends up after the board finances, this is your spending increase, this is how it affects our L rate, which is based on, you know. You will all assess value, just so people know, you know, what it is.
Correct.
That's all. But I think, you know, we did a lot of work tonight, and it's not easy for sure.
No, it's not.
The town budget's pretty much.
Yeah.
Almost. Basically, almost rolled out.
Well, especially when you factor utilities is up.
Correct.
Yep.
I mean, it's all contract, I mean, it's all contracted, all contractual now.
I can reach you with, I mean, you can count more backwards than that town. We didn't add anything, we technically were backwards. Yeah, you know. Um, one, one thing we do have, so we still have, I believe, a motion, I gotta make a motion, that we approve the total town budget. For ninety eight million, two hundred and twenty one thousand six hundred and forty four dollars. On second, so. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Say, very good. This is more than. What's about only going to change, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at five oh one P M.
And that all.